Myrtle Beach. I never want to drive a Jeep on the interstate.
They're great for.
Yeah, cruising around town.
Around.
Yeah.
Six thousand miles.
You're doing a little bit better than I. My truck's for about five months and I already got twenty, twenty-two thousand miles on it.
Now you're saying it was a five thousand mile trip. What'd you say the trip was? Five thousand?
Almost six.
Almost six, that's what he was saying.
Through the mountain.
Somebody knows how to do that, but I don't know.
I do have a question for you, Kelly.
Yep.
How's it going?
All right.
Oh, absolutely.
No, no, no. There's no questions for me.
An open book, brother?
No.
No.
Our hero.
I, well, I told him, I said, I can hijack the meeting if you want me to.
Okay.
I love talking about what we're doing, but I'll be, I'll be nice.
Not too firm, not too soft.
Keep it, keep it to them.
Been trying my whole life.
That's a big agenda. I told Liz, I said, that's a big agenda for an hour. You're not gonna have. How's the feeling today, Thomas?
I want to say yeah, but every time I say it, I feel like I go backwards. Some people mouth shut for a while.
How's the, how's the therapy?
It seems like it's helping with the muscle problems. Like he said, I've aggravated every muscle in that leg. And I got to see the doctor there yesterday and he hit one of them nerves, man, with that needle and woo wee. But they said it could happen.
That's the only thing I'm aware of. Haven't even called me for a meeting yet. My life's been so crazy, I haven't had a chance. Brother, sister dying and everything. Just now getting things straightened up.
There's my buddy. Doing good, how are you?
He's called me fatty.
Make sure you didn't change those around.
Tony, good for that. I did. What's up, buddy? I don't have no food.
Hi, Jim.
We think you're Bob.
You didn't get one?
No, I didn't. She's moving around.
I've been through a little of it.
That was what we had about that.
You guys.
I think so.
Exactly.
Everybody ready?
Uh, do we have paper copies? No, I think we, uh, we print some. I just wouldn't, I have a question, I just yell it out.
We ready, Marky Mark? Thank you, everybody, for coming. Um, welcome. Hey, you want? This is, uh, I'd like to hold order of the work session for, uh, I guess this is, uh, APC, BZA, City Council. Is that right?
Uh, specifically to talk about the, uh, UDO, lack of better words, codes. And, uh, I think, uh, you guys, we'd, we'd given you guys, uh, uh, some time to go through the booklet and stuff and I was, I'd like to open it up for questions, if we could. You want to introduce yourselves first?
Uh, yes. Brian Stumpf with Civic Blueprint and with me is Laney Stumpf with Civic Blueprint and Adam Peaper with, uh, HWC Engineering will be here in just a moment.
Okay, okay. So any questions that any, and I'm talking to all three groups of people. And if you have a question, if you're out in the audience and on one of those, I ask that you go to a microphone when you ask the question because we'd like to get this recorded. So anybody have questions you want to start out with?
I have one.
Your honor, please, your honor and all the boards and elected appointed officials, thank you all for being here. It's pretty cool to have this many groups together and so, and I appreciate you taking your time. So just kind of preface it and I'm gonna have Brian do just an overview and that like, and so I know some of you already have questions prepared, but this will generate more questions if we want to answer all the questions that you have. A lot of times it's easier to ask, I think what's gonna happen is, you know, you guys are gonna have specific questions like, what happens if someone wants to do this on this street? And those are great questions. So ask even hypotheticals, you know, things like that. Small questions are just as good, even better than the big ones, uh, a lot of the time. So Uniform Development Ordinance is, uh, is our opportunity to piggyback off of the comprehensive plan that we did three or four years ago and take that research and data and put it to work. So I know Dylan asked kind of, you know, um, Mr. Little, I'm sorry, asked, uh, what, where did this, uh, where was the kind of teamwork and who, what elected an official, elected and appointed official, city employees kind of gave their input to this. Well, it's really much more than that and I know this is kind of before, uh, your, some of your time or in between some of your time, but we, uh, for, you know, a year would meet at the firehouse together, a huge group with HWC engineers, the same firm that did the UDO and, uh, we did survey monkeys, um, tons of work was done to dig into what is great about Lawrenceburg, um, what can make it even greater? What are our specific needs? What's the challenges that we have? What's the difference between Ludlow Hill and downtown? What's, and even further than that, what's the difference between this part of Ludlow Hill and this part of Ludlow Hill or this part of downtown? What's the difference on fifty? You know, what, what can make our city really great? And when we were doing the comprehensive plan, and you guys have seen that, um, the reason that that data was so important is because we wanted, and HWC and the city wanted this to come from our citizens. To, to come directly from the, the mouths of the people who live here, who raise their children here, who build residences here, who build businesses here, um, to really conform to what they need. And that, that's what a comprehensive plan is. It's, it's a big picture vision of where is our city now, where we come from, but what do the next ten years look like in terms of how can we really maximize the people that live here, their life experience, their quality of life, you know, the mayor's big tenants have always been, you know, jobs, education, you know, tax-based opportunities for employment, um, and then the fun stuff too, you know? How do people enjoy their lives where, where they can walk on a trail or walk their dogs or, uh, what are our schools like? So that's the, that was the comprehensive plan and that was built with, again, a year of work, all the elected and appointed officials, all the employees of the city and the individual citizens themselves. And then we went pretty much immediately from that comprehensive plan to saying, okay, well, this is great and we, we worked really hard on this, we're proud of it. We think it does show us what we need to accomplish to move forward as a city, be, be the best city we can be and continue to grow in that trajectory that you guys have set us on. But how do we do that practically? And what we knew immediately was our set of codes that are really divided into the books that Mario and John use and Ashley use on a daily basis and indirectly Billy and Brad and really everybody. These codes, like our subdivision code, our building standards code, all the different books, uh, that, uh, make up our planning and zoning, so that's how I always kind of look at it. All of those codes have not been touched, a lot, a lot of them since the eighties and nineties. We did, we did kind of a tweak to the building standards code, uh, right before Mike Clark retired, just because he knew that when he was leaving, there were some things that he wanted us to carry forward. But really, what we knew was that it hadn't been touched in a really long time, uh, hadn't been updated in a really long time. And even when it was created, was not created with the same care and precision and community input that this new draft UDO is. It wasn't tailored, for example, you know, what you, one of the things you see is that the, the standards that you have to follow when you build a residence in downtown are the same exact standards that you use on Ludlow Hill, right? And that doesn't make sense. It doesn't maximize Ludlow Hill or downtown, if you're not being specific to, and, and, and these guys, HWC through the work that they've done, it's not just generic Ludlow Hill or downtown or fifty. It's broken up into what you'll see and they'll explain is in multiple zones, multiple, uh, classifications, really maximize and maximize and maximize every aspect of how someone who already lives here handles their property, wants to build a new house, handles their property, wants to build a business, our schools, et cetera. So, so that's what this is. And again, it was built directly with the work of experts, so we didn't do it ourselves. You know, John and Mario and I didn't sit around and say, well, what, what do we got to fix here? You know, what, what would be better?
So reversing it a little bit, Dale, um, I've watched those videos, I don't know if anybody else had a chance to watch the videos, but basically in each one of the videos, you did a little pre thing and you said, hey, you know, we're getting ready for the steering committee. So my, my question is, who was on that steering committee? That, that basically when you guys came here and you met last year with the steering committee, who was on that steering?
That answers my question perfectly because he references meeting at the firehouse, but I sat on planning commission.
Well, no, the comprehensive plan, I mean, he's talking about the comprehensive, which is, and I do agree with part of it, but that was, it has to be done every ten years and so forth and we did different things. But my biggest question is, who was on the steering committee?
Steering committee was Justin Opert, myself, Brad Massey, John, Mario, we even brought in people from the private sector, we brought in land consultants, uh, we brought in, um, Billy Shelton from the county, so we, we.
Was there anybody on planning and zoning or BZA on the steering committee?
Uh, I don't know if Justin was on.
No, Justin was not. He wasn't allowed to be.
I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just curious because I, I watched the videos and I, it just, and you basically were coming out presenting this stuff, but I was just curious of who was on these videos.
Well, the, the thing to make clear is that the steering committee, me, John, Mario, we didn't write this. The HWC engineers and their experts wrote it. So no one, I guess what I'm hearing is, well, who from the city of Lawrenceburg helped write this code? None of us did. The citizens did. So I mean, I didn't say, hey, I dealt well with the city attorney, think you should make this rule for this sector. Mario didn't say, I think you should make.
Well, I think there was, I think there was reference and there were several times he said, well, you, you know, in this area, you guys are a lot more stringent than most cities that we do this for. And somebody had to give them that input.
They got it from interviewing people through the process.
Yeah, yeah, let me, if I could jump in here, so one of the, uh, one of the things, just back up, say, broad picture of the, uh, UDO, one of the things that we're looking to do is align your development codes with the comprehensive plan because what you, codes you currently have do not align with the vision that's in the comprehensive plan. And so you've got this great vision that you want to pursue and guess what? You can't do it. It's essentially illegal. And so we need to update the ordinance, the ordinances to do that. Uh, the other part was, the things we had heard was, you know, the ordinances are confusing, a lot of, uh, jumping back and forth, between places, so we simplified the codes. As dumb as we, we've taken pretty much all of Title fourteen and pulled your land use section of your city code, pulled that into one document that is hyperlinked and word searchable and so forth. And then really tried to tailor it towards the, when people are coming to Lawrenceburg, coming into the city, they're looking at, you have two questions. Usually starts out with two types of questions, either one of, I'm a business that does X, what district do I need to be in? Or, hey, I've got this property, what can I do with it? What are the standards for it? So we want to make sure that that was easy. The comprehensive plan was the basis for what we did. We, uh, made some, really tailored the ordinance for the four different districts that are outlined in the comprehensive plan and addressing those concerns from either increasing the amount of owner occupied housing and into protecting steep slopes, things of that nature, addressing, uh, the concerns along the US fifty corridor and identifying and, and understanding the different styles of development that happened throughout Lawrenceburg. Lawrenceburg is an amazingly diverse city. We're not, you're not some little flat town, a, a plane, a, a town on a flat plain where, uh, you, you've got some pretty, you've got incredible downtown, you've got the, the housing up on the hill. And so we want to make sure that, that your standards reflect your, your vision that's in your comprehensive plan. Also, uh, that we added elements for infill development so that when something is being proposed, it's taken into consideration the context of what's around it. We don't want sameness, but we want it to be cohesive. We don't want it to appear that some project fell out of the sky and you're like, well, it doesn't, it doesn't fit with the, the neighborhood. And then some other things that we've done that are new to, train that we've been doing in, uh, development ordinances is to put in maintenance standards that will give the city better power, you know, to enforce regulations. People aren't taking care of the yards, you know, weeds, uh, things of that nature. And then finally, uh, improving the enforcement options. Right now, you can essentially sue somebody. And several years ago, state law changed to give cities better opportunities or options for how to enforce the ordinance. So we've done, we've taken advantage of what the, uh, state law has allowed, so you have a ticketing process now, which, uh, when I've been in, in John's shoes, it's been, it helps with the enforcement. To be able to, some of especially like sign barriers, sign issues or other violations, you can, uh, address it and resolve it, uh, quickly with, uh, the, uh, ticketing process rather than, uh, the, a long drawn out, um, legal process.
What do you mean?
Prime example, we had a community I was serving as, uh, on call services as planning director and we had somebody that was putting out, uh, illegal signs. And before the ordinance, it was, we can sue you and that's it. With the ticketing process, I mean, we'll send a warning letter and say, hey, stop, these signs are illegal, they're blocking the sidewalk. And they kept doing it. So here's your ticket, here's your, here's a, in a, your, uh, a citation. And it's like a hundred dollar fee for the first one. And that little hundred dollar fee gets their attention and like, hey, guess what? They stopped putting. Yeah, so they were, so they're blocking the sidewalk.
Well, I mean, they're saying, they're saying stuff on the sidewalks.
No, no, no.
Yeah, but illegal signs that are popping up. So i- as opposed to, hey, stop putting the sign out in the right way and, or we'll sue you. This was, it's a way to help with that enforcement. So specifically to the UDO process, we started off in August of twenty-two, uh, on the tails of the comprehensive plan and looked through, had our kickoff meeting, went through, identified for all your development codes, issues both with how do they, are they legal today? Many of these things, um, signage, things of that nature, state laws changed, uh, federal laws have changed that it gives us direction that, uh, we want to make sure your ordinances are as legal as possible, as well as what needs to be done to bring those, bring the, uh, ordinances in line with the comprehensive plan. We had proposed solutions as far as here's different ways that we can address those that gave us, and then in identifying those and selecting those, we took those with the, uh, best practices. So one of the things that, uh, the city really emphasized on us is, look, we, we want to know what are the best practices and how we're doing things, subdivisions, issuing permits, things of that nature that we can do and then tailor those to Lawrenceburg. And so that's what we did and that was how the ordinance came about. And while we're doing this, I know that, um, John has been taking applications are coming through and, and looking at the current code and looking at, okay, well, how would I review this under the, the proposed UDO? And identifying the, uh, the difference that way to make sure that things are working and there are things that we aren't, that, uh, we're not missing. And so that was kind of our process to get us to where we are here today.
I got a quick question. Like I said, I just got a few questions. I watched some things, read through most of it and I'm just a clerk treasurer, I don't, but I want to eat this stuff anyway. But I'm just, just curious about things, but, um, with the zoning, who, who came up with all the zoning districts or is that one of those, I mean, is that something that cities are doing now? Most cities are basically, they're putting zoning districts and everything, um, because before I don't think we did, we not, we didn't have all those different districts like R one, R two, you know, and all those things. So, I mean, what, what kind of basis did you create all those from or is it basically, you just come around and look at ours? Did you have input or? I'm just curious on that.
Yeah, so we reviewed your current ordinance and the districts that are there. We're looking at the types of development that we're expecting in the different portions of the city based on the comprehensive plan. And that's how we came up with the scheme for the resident.
Help create more housing is, because that's one of our comprehensive plan, that was one of the main things with the comprehensive plans is the housing.
Yeah, uh, among other things, but we're trying to identify the different types. So, so right now, your current, uh, regulations really focus on single family homes or apartments. It doesn't, it doesn't, we got a little more granular and more detailed about the different types of housing. So getting into duplexes, things of that nature. So there's different types of residential so that we know that, uh, in those sort of phase in based off of the district as well. So that's part of the reason for the districts. The other part is the development standards. So we're doing more of a conventional suburban style development up in Ludlow Hill, but downtown, it's totally different. Are the, the, if you were to go get a tape measure and measure, uh, you know, the homes downtown and their setbacks versus what you would see in Ludlow Hill, they're different. So that's where those, those differences in the residential districts come from. The, the other part that is different, uh, about the table or about the, the development standards, I don't want to just jump there, uh, in the residential districts. So you'll see that we identify, um, single family homes, detached, uh, duplexes, triplexes and so forth, but we have different standards for each of those. What that allows is often, where you're quoted is now, like, say you've got a duplex on a lot, well, that's one building, two units in one building on one lot. So you're forcing at least half of that duplex, if not the entire duplex to be rented. Knowing that homeownership is a desire, we've updated the development standards table that you see there so that that property line, if there's, if it's a side by side duplex, that property line can go through the party wall. Uh, and so each half of that duplex can be owner occupied. So it's things like that that we've done throughout, in the ordinance.
So you can have owner occupied for, you know, you split the lot and have two owner occupied or normally you would just have a duplex or just.
Yeah, exactly. So now each is a unit, one unit on one lot.
I, I do have, and like I'm skipping around, I know these other people got questions too, that the landlord section, what, I mean, can you give me a little insight on that? And, and, and I know that there's different stipulations. If you want to basically be able to rent something out, you got to go through different procedures and this and that and stuff like that. And I, what I'm worried about is, you know, we're talking about affordable housing in Lawrenceburg for citizens. You know, I'm just wondering if you put too many stipulations on these landlords, are you going to have affordable housing anymore? Because they, they have to buy by so many stipulations in this UDO. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, like I said, I'm just.
Well, and not only that, but manpower to make sure that you're doing it because it's not just rentals, it's, it's hotels, it's everything. So how do we have the manpower to ultimately end up doing that?
For what, the inspections?
Yeah. You're talking two, two apartments or units per day, potentially, maybe more. If you put the current language, because the current language basically says that, that it's rentals, it's hotels, it's so many other things.
Yeah, referring to chapter ten, the housing code?
Yes.
And those, yeah, so that's actually your, that's your current housing code right now. We've essentially updated it to take out the jargon in it and to just identify it as a rental permit. Call it what it was.
Also, our current housing code has an inspection in it for every two years?
Yes.
Interesting.
Never been done for the last twenty-five years, I know. Never been inspected.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if we want to. I think, I just want to throw mine out here. This has been voted on by planning commission and I know a lot of the members didn't read this book. Heck, I haven't gone through all of it. So I would like to go through it page by page because when we said we're going to have this meeting, I said it's going to be more than one meeting. Because I want to go through the whole thing page by page because there's so many things in here that I don't agree with.
Well, that's why I think it, and, and I, I, I agree with you. We can have as many meetings as you want.
Well, the way we're doing it now, just going bouncing back and forth on everything.
This is a, a kickoff.
Yeah.
Okay? But I would expect each person to go through this and I would expect questions from that person. Okay? Because otherwise, let me finish, please. Otherwise, we will be going back, bouncing back and forth. So I think it's everybody's responsibility to review this. And I'm gonna tell you, you, you made, you made a comment, Tony, we haven't done this in twenty-five years. Well, shame on us. Okay? We're not doing what we say we, we should be doing. And now is the time for us to fix that. If you don't want that, now is the time that we take, we fix that.
That's what I mean, that's why I think.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
Go by page by page. That way we don't skip nothing.
Well.
Because a lot of things, you, a lot of things, we all read in this, we don't, there, there might be some questions we don't even know to ask ourselves, you know? Dylan might bring up a good question on this page that I didn't even think of, you know, or something like that. So put all our minds together on each page and go through the whole thing and then when we get to the end of it, we all agree on it.
Well, I think that's very, uh, a very cumbersome way to do it. I think we're all capable of reading and deciphering and I think if we all take the time to do that and then come back with questions, I think it would be a better use of time.
I don't know about, I don't know about better use of time. It'd be quicker, yes, but I don't know if it'd be better use.
Can I say something?
No, hold on.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, there, he's on the commit, he's on a committee, so he can say. But, but what I'm saying though is, listen, guys, um, I'm gonna liken this to what we, and, and I, I, I don't want to do this, but I am going to say it. I liken this to what, we did this at school board for fourteen years, I was on there. We have a set of standards that, that are school board standards, that are state standards. We had a company come in and help us very early on in my career at the school board saying, hey, uh, show us where we're deficient and tell us, show us where we're not doing what we say we do. Okay? Or the opposite, show us where we should be doing something that we aren't doing. Okay? That was the initial step. But then we had that company every year add to or delete based upon any new legislation or anything else that came through. That way your code of standards then is up to date every year. Where we have failed over the years, and I'm not putting this on John or Mario or Mike Clark or anything because, um, I, I think, you know, our code of sta, our, our codes are very cumbersome, as you can see, right? I mean, we all, none of us, not a person in this room has probably read through them all. Maybe John, maybe Mario, I don't know, over there, there ten year here. But, but be quite honest, you know, I haven't. Whenever something becomes a hot issue, I'll go look up the code or the ordinance, things like that. And I'm sure some of you and, and quite a bit, a few of you have done the same thing. Because then we want to know what we're talking about because that issue is going to be a hot issue, whether it's in a meeting or, or on Facebook or whatever the case may be. But this is our opportunity to fix what we're doing and make sure that we're following what we're saying we're doing. Because we're not following what we say we do.
Well, some things we're going backwards on, just like in the, the historical stuff. It took us a long time to get rid of that historical board in Lawrenceburg because it was too strict and nothing but complaints out of it.
We still have a historic.
And then we brought it back.
Okay.
With the deal with the state or whatever, we brought it back as an advisory committee. But now they've got as much power as the police department in this.
That's, that's what I'm saying, Tony. If, if, if you, if you, you know, that, we, we can, we need to address these things. I'm not saying that you, 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 you know, we got to take, we're not the professionals in writing these things. All right? Not, not a person in here except for these folks out in the audience that, that wrote, helped write it. They took what they had from our, you know, our comprehensive plan. Listen, guys, we didn't do a comprehensive plan for, I don't know, how long was it?
Every ten years.
Fifteen years, I mean?
Ten.
Ten years? And, and we updated that, what, two years ago or whatever it was? And we updated that, what, two years ago or whatever it was?
But you're supposed to do them every 10 years, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you have to do them, I say, every 10 years.
Yeah. But the thing is, is a lot's changed in 10 years.
A lot, yeah.
And these codes that we go and live by every day and he's got to live by every day and decipher, were very subjective, I think is a good way to put it. So then there's a lot of decisions that that man and Mike Clark or whoever's deciphering, whoever's coming to them for this permit or that permit, it's a very subjective decision. So then there's a lot of finger pointing. You know, well, why did John let them do that? Why did Mike Clark let them do that? This is an opportunity for us to tighten these things up. You know, I'll be honest with you, I don't care if it takes three years to do it. But I, I'm asking everybody to read it, come up with questions. We'll have, everybody that comes back to the next meeting with questions, we will answer, or they will answer, every question. Okay? But it's the responsibility of everybody, including myself, to read through that. And if you don't want to, I can't force you. But if you want to get your questions answered, I encourage you to do that. And I think we owe that, to make sure that we're doing things. I just want to make sure, if we're saying we're doing something, we're doing it. That's all, that's all I'm asking.
And I agree with you. I mean, and I just assume that everybody came to this meeting and read everything. I would just assume that they got through everything and read everything because they have questions. That's why I just had a few of them.
Absolutely.
And I just...
That's what I thought.
And, you know, just, I would like to take advantage of this time because I still have some questions.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to come back another time, I already read through it once. But then my question is, with the zoning, the different zoning districts, it seemed like it's a little bit more lenient as far as getting more housing and stuff like that. Have we taken into consideration, and I don't know who's the answer to all these things as far as, you know, the sewer or the parking and all that stuff, that's the utilities and stuff that goes along with it? Have we taken into consideration that we would be sufficient? And as far as the use of the alleys, does this require more traffic in alleys? I mean, is all that stuff taken into consideration when you did these different zones? And you allow duplexes, triplex, quadplex or whatever on all these different properties and stuff? And I don't know if you guys have the answer or who has the answer to that.
Yeah, so as far as the utilities go, that was not, we were not even aware of any restrictions in utilities. Our understanding is there's capacity to serve these, different uses. Obviously, where their utilities need to be extended and such, they need to follow the standards. Those standards are now, part of it was herding cats and bringing all these different ordinances together. So those construction standards are in chapter nine of this document. So regarding the, how the sewers need to be constructed. The, what this, what the UDO is doing as far as allowing the different types of uses...
So basically, if somebody was able to put a duplex in, because of this UDO, they're allowed to put a duplex on a piece of property or a single home or whatever. They would still have to come to John or whoever to make sure that the utilities, that they put it on there, that would be sufficient for the utilities?
Yeah. The planning administrator...
Because they would have to come to a planning and zoning or a BZA, maybe they would just go to John by this ordinance, right?
Correct, yeah. Because at this point, you're dealing with, if it's permitted by right and they don't need to change the zoning of it, then yes. It would just as is today. If you're doing something that's permitted by right today, you're...
Because it would be if this was adopted, yes.
Yeah. And all the permits here essentially have to get approval by, there's a technical advisory committee? So any, like, any site plans or if there's any simple plat split, you know, lot splits?
Commercial developments or new residential subdivisions of a number of lots, not just putting a duplex on them? Who would, this does mention something about the UDO, a technical advisor committee?
Yeah.
Who would that be?
Yeah, so typically, that is your utilities, Matt. You have the different utilities that are involved?
We set that up.
Yeah.
We will, once we pass it. It'll be the affiliate. So it gives the opportunity for John, Mario, Billy primarily, and then Brad, whoever else needs to look at. And this is when we're doing a subdivision plat or a project, maybe a new business on 50 where everyone gets to weigh in and sign off on permitting together. We kind of do that already, but this just puts it into a rule and makes it easier for Warren, John, and Billy. Those are my point equal.
Dale, one question with that, with what you just said, new business on 50. So a few years ago, we had crematorium wanting to come in. And they had to send out letters to everybody, surrounding neighbors. They won't have to do that now? They can just go to John and say, okay?
They're asking for a variance.
But it wouldn't be a variance.
If it's not a variance, it's allowed, you just do it.
So the crematorium could have just slid right in there.
Not necessarily. You'd have to see whether or not a crematorium is allowed in that.
It's business.
Type of business and it's the area. But that's how the code already is. I mean, the code says, a code tells you what you can and can't do. Whether you're a residential person or a business person, whether they're building new construction or modifying current construction when they're making a subdivision. So what we want and what we owe to our current citizens and future citizens is for them to be able to go online and figure out what they can and can't do and not even have to call John. And that way, if Target wants to come here, or Kroger wants to expand, or someone wants to build a new house and move their family here, it's easy, they can see it. It allows them to do what they need to do. And we want to facilitate that. We want to make it easier for people to do business with the city and live in the city. And right now, we have codes that haven't been updated in so long. And the updates that they were made, the problem with cherry picking small parts and then one person changing this, one person changing this, you end up with an inconsistent code in conflict. Because your neighbor wanted to put a pool in their front yard and you let them because they're your cousin. And then the code got changed seven years ago. And then you've got an inconsistent code that no one can really look at and objectively see what they can and can't do. So it's not to restrict people, it's to promote new development and to protect the things we have here, like you said, the story. I mean, I think you would agree with one of certain historic properties. I mean, that's important to us. So, and we want it with landlords. We want landlords to provide safe and healthy housing for our citizens. These are minimum standards that are objective, that we hired experts to develop for us. And it allows us to have a code that people can use to build and grow our city.
If I may, I want to ask a question. The people that work with this on a day-to-day basis, obviously, is John and Mario. What's your opinion of this document? Is it going to make your life easier, more efficient? Is it anti-productive for you guys?
Changing it as a whole will make things more efficient. Our current code was put in place in 1997 for the majority. I think subdivision code's 95, some other codes were 1994. This does it bring, this brings it more into the current century. And it takes care of a lot of conflicting codes that we've had in the past.
Do you think that there's some changes that need to be made?
As far as specifics, I'd like the board to be comfortable with it, yes.
As far as some of the codes?
To answer your question, fuel homes and crematories are permitted on Highway 50 per this code.
I know, it would have slid right in there, even though the people did not want it.
If it's in that business district.
If we had this at that time, that crematorium would be running right now on Highway 50 right next to the school.
So I have a question as well. If this makes this more simplified, which, you know, I agree with, if it helps them, I'm all for it. But will there be a need for planning and zoning anymore? For them to have things presented in front of them, to make decisions on whether they should or should not, whether they need a variance and they accept it or pass it on to the BZA?
And that's, and Mr., that's a great question. And I think we've kind of lost track of what our planning commission and our BZA are. The planning commission, one of its primary jobs, believe it or not, is to pass a comprehensive plan and is to pass a UDO. And that's, that's one of the main reasons planning commission exists. And after that, their primary job is to approve subdivision plats for recons. That's really it. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals is only tasked with hearing zoning variances where someone wants to do something that they're specifically prohibited from doing in the current code. And so the way it works on a day-to-day basis is that John's in his office, he's got the code. Again, people, if we have a good code, most builders, businesses, individuals will just pull it up online and get all their questions answered right there. Then when they go to get permitting, and John's done, and John and Mario and Ashley have done a lot of this legwork, and John specifically with the electronic permitting that's matched up with the county and other entities. He's setting us up to do this ever since John's taken his job. Because now he's got electronic permitting, we have a direct conduit to his office where builders can obtain their permits, they know what rules they can follow, and then they can contact him directly. The problem we have right now, like John said, is because our code is so old and it's been modified on one-on-one things, like a crematorium came up. So we just changed the rules just for that one thing, which is never a good thing. Because you want to look at the big picture and be objective. And so, because that, because it's been that way for so long, that's why we have so many variances. And that's why John has so many challenges where he's got to say, well, you kind of can't do this, maybe you can't, let's follow a variance, let's get you in front of the BZA. In a perfect world, we wouldn't really have variances. Because we'd have a good code that is objective, it's created to benefit everyone, it was created by experts with tons of work and opinions from the community. And we would put that in place. Look, our job is not to be experts in planning and zoning. Our job is to make sure that we hire experts to create a code that's good. And it's never going to be perfect, and we will have variances. But we put that in place, that's our job, that's why we're here. None of us in this room are experts, well, besides HWC and they think, none of us are experts and you don't have to be, that's the good news. We put people in place that can, that do this for a living, done it for many other communities, have worked on this for three years now. And it is something that is very good, is very positive. It's not going to cover everything. And there will be variances, but it's so much better than what we have now. And that's why it's a good thing.
I have to agree with that. I think planning and commission, their job is to take something and say, okay, it fits within our code. Got it. Now, wait a minute. So if it doesn't fit in our code, it doesn't fit our code. Planning commissions say, well, it's still a good idea, we'd like to see this done in town. So we're going to send you to the BZA. And the citizens have had a chance to talk about it because they've had to notify everybody around. So whatever goes in their neighborhood, they've got to say. They can come to that meeting and say, hey, we don't want this here, or hey, we want it here.
But what you're saying is not true. None of the, none of what you're saying is true.
Bull!
I mean, that's not the way it works.
Is that not what we do in planning commission? If it doesn't work, we send it to the BZA with a recommendation.
And that's...
You're talking about a variance.
For a variance.
Yes.
One question I have. Are we going to stick with the current fee structure?
That is true.
Or will we create a new one? Because there was no fee structure created for this.
Correct. The fee structure, we always have the fee structure be outside of the ordinance itself. That way, you can update it as need be on a, as an ordinance, through, just through the council. As opposed to going through the entire process of going to the planning commission and so forth.
Makes sense. I got a question, just change it up a little bit here. But like I said, I was a clerk treasurer. And I think you mentioned in one of the videos that we changed, we took the word clerk treasurer in certain areas, or probably all out of the whole code, that altogether. And I remember Dale saying something about business license, we no longer have to go through our office. Can you give me a little insight of any of that stuff that I just said there?
We're not going to do business license anymore at all, just specific to that. But I don't know where else clerk treasurer you mentioned.
So is that where, is that where you took it out, or do you remember?
No.
It's been a minute, but yeah. I believe it was just based on direction that we were given.
So you're saying we're not going to do business license, so we're not going to do background checks for anybody that wants to do a business in this town? I mean, I'm just kind of curious, I don't know.
I mean, no, we can't, we're not, we're not allowed to tell someone that they can't have a business because we ran a background check and saw something that we didn't like. I mean, I know we, the city has done that in the past, but it's not, that's something we should do.
Is that what other cities do?
The business license thing is pretty unique to Lawrenceburg. We have not run into that in other communities.
Business licenses, other...
No, we have a...
If I can ease the load over there, I'm all for it. Take it away!
Yeah. So the way that it's handled is really through permitting, right? Because our focus is on land use, not business. It's on land use and how things are being used. So if it's a, say, a festival or something, we have a temporary, that would be a temporary use permit. And that's how that...
They would still have something through John's office as far as any business down here? Who's operating, just the contact for 911, this, I mean, all, I mean, what about...
The difference is, it's more about how they're going to get them. And the, but the business license rules were in place way before you got there, way before Suzanne. But really, what I've noticed and the reason it's important to fix this is because it puts you guys in a bad position that you shouldn't be in. I mean, I know that that's the law for Lawrenceburg, but we don't, we don't want to tell people who can run a business, we just want to tell them how through zoning to say, okay, this is, you got to have a ramp to get in for ADA, and you got to have parking spots, and you got to do this and that. You know, to just say, hey, we ran your background check, we saw that in 1992, you got to do what, you're not allowed to start a t-shirt business. We don't, we're not going to do that because that's just not... And I know someone else made that law a long time ago, but we're going to get rid of that because that's not helpful to run the city.
I mean, I'm not saying I totally agree with what you said there. But I, but as far as, I mean, I would, I would want a certain character, a person, to be able to come down and do business in Lawrenceburg.
There's a way to vet them.
You know, I see what you're saying. But, and what about like food trucks and different, you know, mobile vendors and stuff?
It's the how.
So it doesn't matter who it is, it's, as long as they got this, this, and this. As far as who that person is, it doesn't matter.
It's the how, so the how is what's important. The thing about, you have food, the food truck's a great example. If you have a food truck, what's important? You want to know this person, been cleared by the Department that they're operating a clean operation, that they have all of the safety apparatus, that they have access to electric, that they're disposing their grease in the right way, that they're parking in the proper place, that they have DOT qualifications. So all of those things are now...
So they would all, and see, that's the stuff that we used to collect. So now that John would do that, thanks, John. He would collect, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's...
It just makes it better. It's doing the same thing, it actually does more of what you're saying, Mark, and Brett. What you guys are saying is how do we make sure we have the best level of people serving our residents and their businesses? This is actually a better way to do it. This is make sure we have the best quality of businesses serving our residents. It's just a better way to do it.
Is that doing back checks on the people running it?
No, I mean, no, we're not going to do like a background check on it.
I mean, you wouldn't want a sniper or somebody coming in here running one of them food trucks, would you?
What is it?
You'd have a sniper or somebody come in.
Sniper?
I want to kill somebody?
We're not going to...
I mean, I'm just going this out here. Or there's some other things that, you know, that they may have done. Because you want to know what their background check is if they're...
Well, and here's what... And, well, I mean, this is a good issue, we can go, this is a small issue. But, and Tony, you're right, I mean, there's a million things. We could go through each page, and like the mayor said, we will. And absolutely, I think that's totally fair. But let's say, let's focus on, let's stay on this issue. So here's how you figure out if someone, like, say someone is coming to downtown and they want to open up a dentist office. Well, the old way of doing things, they go, fill out an application with Suzanne, we charge 50 bucks or whatever, we run a background check on them using whatever latest background check software was. And then we kind of look at our old, really old Lawrence, local Lawrenceburg code and figure out, okay, can they open a business or not? Well, the better way of doing that is saying, well, okay, we just passed a UDO that really makes it very easy to see all the rules that a dentist in downtown Lawrenceburg has to follow to open a business. They have to do all of these things. And the reason they have to do all those things is because our experts, through all their work and research, figured out, you know, this, these are the standards that are objectively work for Lawrenceburg, work for all the cities we've experienced. And we know, okay, well, if you're a dentist, that means you've been licensed by the state to practice dentistry. And we know that if you did something that was inappropriate, or if you committed fraud, or if you harmed your patients, then there are all these other organizations that make sure you can't practice dentistry, right? Rather than that when Mark and Suzanne try to do that, we defer to Department of Health, people who serve food. The state and federal regulations for doctors and dentists, uh, business owners who have to file their taxes and have to follow, uh, all the rules of the land. Those are better things that we can use now to ensure that, hey, our businesses are the best that they need to be to serve our residents. So I mean, that's a great example, um, but that's how we do it. That's how we're gonna do it going forward rather than how we used to do it.
And in terms of the Design Review Board and the Mural Committee, is that something that was already in our current code or is that something that's going to be newly created?
Yes, the, the Design Review Board would be new. And essentially what, that's a, an element or an aspect of the Technical Advisory Committee for, uh, projects that would trigger design review. So it's an infill development that's happening. So the, the goal there is that someone's looking at the architecture of, of that building or how it fits. And we provide guidelines for what they're looking at. Uh, but those will be, that is done as simply as advisory. Here, here's the comments that we've...
Where would those appointments come from?
Um...
I know that, I believe for the Design Review Board, it stated it would be appointments from Planning Commission, um, but I don't recall seeing anything for the Mural Committee.
Yeah, Mural Committee is separate from all we do. Yeah, so the Design Review, uh, three members in, that, um, could be, so there, it's, it's a subcommittee of the Plan Commission. This is three members who may include design professionals, neighborhood representatives, representatives of the city or county agencies and other agencies, or consultants deemed appropriate. Uh, the members are nominated by the Plan Commission, confirmed by the City Council.
Okay.
And it talks about their, their terms.
Yeah, I knew that part. I was just curious about the Mural Committee because I saw that in here, but it doesn't...
Yeah, that already exists and it's not...
See anything for how that would be appointed for the Mural?
That already exists.
Yeah.
It does. Okay. Who makes those appointments? You or...
I think it's on, uh, I don't, I don't know. It's through Main Street, wasn't it?
I think it's through Main Street.
Is that through Main Street?
What's that?
No. The Mural Committee?
Mural Committee.
I think so.
What came through the city and then we had others through Main Street?
I've, I've not been a part of it.
It was a, it was a quite a weird thing. Do we just have an honor mural for a while? And these committees are not intended to over, to make things more complicated. They're actually intended to make things smoother and more simple and help, again, you know, John be the point person and Mario, the two point people for putting these things in the works. So these committees, you know, one of the things that came up for years is that we would have a plat and it would get approved. And Billy didn't get a chance to weigh in on it, or Brad didn't get a chance to weigh in on it, right? So I mean, then we had to kinda go backwards. So this just gives us a chance to get out in front of it, do it more efficiently and make things better for everybody.
Hey, I'll make you an example of the Technical Advisory Committee or TAC. So that is, much like if you're regularly scheduled Plan Commission meetings and such, you'd have that date scheduled. And then if things need to go to TAC, they, they do. Uh, and it has representatives from, you know, the, the city, the county is needed, even the state. For, for example, you know, indot, if there's a, a project that would, they would have a say on. The point is to get everybody in the same room, even all the utility and telecom providers, things of that nature. And, and a good example is that, uh, it was one TAC meeting and the water department wanted a certain thing. The fire department wanted something else for hydrants. They issued, they do their review, hey, here's our comments. And the TAC meeting is really set there to be able to go through the comments from the different parties. And it, it was interesting because what the fire marshal wanted and what the water company wanted were totally opposed. And you, you just couldn't be that way. And so here we are at the TAC meeting, be able to watch them say, okay, well, here's how we solve that and work together. And if things get taken care of and it, and you make sure that the right people are seeing the, um, the project and that you're able to address any conflicts that come out in people's, you know, preferred designs for these things. And so that's a way that the TAC process really works well.
My other question would be in terms of, so one of the things that's in this code is houses that are next to each other can't be the same color, correct? Is that part of the current code or is that something that's new?
No, that's new. Uh, yeah, that's something...
Where did that input come from?
Subdivisions. Uh, it's actually relatively common when we get to, come to that part. So on a residential architectural standards, um...
It's for new development.
Yeah.
We're not gonna go for the existing ones.
So with new development, so that's not, basically I understand what you're saying, but what I'm getting at is we have residential homeowner grants. If they are applying for a grant, are we going to dictate what color they can paint their house based off of what their neighbor's house is going to be?
No, the, yeah, somebody got an existing house, you're, you're painting it, that's just maintenance. We're not, this is for new development, so you get a sub, say you got a new subdivision coming in. The desire here, you see the, on the screen, um, so I've got a new residential neighborhood coming in. The yellow house is the, is the subject house, you know, like, okay, here's the one that's being reviewed. When they submit their building permit, one of the things they'll submit, they'll identify is these, these homes here that are, have a one that are shown in the darker blue. You can't have the same elevation. The, the goal here is architectural diversity. So you can't have the same elevation or the same color scheme. Uh, further out, you can have the same elevation, but it's gonna be a different color scheme. And what that does is it gives, uh, architectural diversity and, to the neighborhood. So it's not a bunch of, a, a common complaint we hear is we get a bunch of beige boxes and it's cookie cutter and all the same. And the, and this is a simple way to address that and give some variety.
And you're, and this is a good, Mr. Little, this is a good example because, again, this is for new development. And if for some reason a builder came in and said, hey, I'm gonna build a subdivision up on the hill and I want all the houses to be the same color. Well, they can still come and ask for a variance. And if they come in and show us that that's a good thing, then we can let them do it. Uh, but again, this is HWC saying, okay, objectively, this is our, what we see as common best practice. So this will be the rule and then we can grant variance if we want to. And, and it's for new development, not existing development.
Well, what, what about like down here?
Oh.
We got some of our property. Are we gonna tell them if they wanna buy this property, we're gonna tell them what color their house is gonna be?
It's for new develop, like a brand new building you build. If you build three brand new houses next to each other.
Well, no, I'm talking about like the couple of them that we've got. And they say the houses, one of them, they say they're white on both sides.
Is this for new development or a new house?
Not for...
Yeah.
New houses?
New. And new construction.
To answer your question, yes, if they're developing on a new plot of land and the houses next to them are white, they can't paint their house white.
They could.
They could?
They come, ask for a variance?
Well, yes, but with the code, it's restricted.
One of the, we, we focus a lot on process and be very explicit with the process. Um, that's what Chapter Eight identifies for, the different things. Be, well, Seven deals with subdivisions, Eight deals with other approval processes. Try and make sure that, that, um, those are very clear and what needs to happen. Uh, I'm very partial to making sure we have written commitments for, for dealing, operations have come up, how a business operates. If there are commitments that are made at a meeting, we wanna make sure that that gets, captures a written commitment and recorded. Just, that protects you in the long run. So should that business owner change, that can be, that restriction can be found, uh, in the record that they'll do, title search they'll do when they, they're switching, uh, properties. The other part, and it, it may seem simple, but it's, it's an important aspect. So when you have a primary plat come through, someone's dividing property, right now your ordinance for anything that isn't specifically regarding a, essentially a subdivision plat requirement, that would actually have to go to the BZA for a variance. The way the code is written is that when you're, have a, a, a primary plat, you're gonna look at a preliminary landscape plan, things of that nature, uh, along with it. It's, serves as sort of initial site plan review. And if there are things that don't fit because of utility locations, things of that nature, the Plan Commission would be able to approve that deviation from the standard. It allows them to look at that as a whole. Say for landscaping is probably a, a thing that may be the most common. Oh, well, I've got a utility that's been here. I can't put these, uh, trees in that, that the ordinance requires. It would allow the Plan Commission to say, okay, moving them here is fine. Uh, right now you'd have to, actually have to go to the BZA to, to get that approved or get that, that, uh, change approved. So those are some of the things, trying to keep the decisions where they make sense and keep the process straightforward and clear.
Has no, has no, has nobody eaten pizza yet? What? Seems like a big problem.
Well, let's, let's do this. Let's take five minutes. Everybody go grab some food, come back and we'll work through it.
Man, we're hard on...
We're less cranky.
I got a head on.
Oh, yes, I have.
Read it all?
Not all of them, but then I did read, I did not read through the other... I like to see what are over there.
Believe it or not, I went through this whole thing.
There's too much things that have happened. Why don't we just change it after?
Well, and so like, that's, that's never, I'm not a, I am never getting...
I mean, I...
You, I remember. And where my office is now, about how I thought this was... There's...
We did do this. We did go through that, um, a few years ago when I go over there and I was checking a...
I didn't find my vote. Enough double talk here tonight, I'm already...
Sweet soup, man. No, we haven't. Should be done.
They're not, sir.
He's going to once we, once we come back, right?
What about the family? Trying to get, uh, what ifs.
Hurry up, or Lenny gets there.
I don't know.
Okay. I'm worried, dude. And there's a key.
What'd you have done? How long's it been?
Yeah, see, and the thing of it is, you know, I already created some of my phone, be, be doing that. But then I'm, uh, the Facebook.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, little lot.
Battery?
I, I need more to drink.
Light?
No, I don't want to go, I want some little drink. It's just like, it's such a rate to get through.
Hey, Mario, how you doing with lip tacks? Handicap thing? Yeah, when, when do you think I'll be in? I can't go to Eagles until that's done. Cause that, that oldest thought, that oldest sister?
Old sister's out.
Yeah. That oldest sister's nothing like the other.
I don't rent hotels. Sleep there, take a shower.
How's it going this year? They, uh, every month they do like, like a special pizza.
Okay.
And, and right now it's a room. I'm just not crazy about, but last month they had a mashed potato pizza.
Okay, that might be...
It sounded bad.
Really?
I mean, it was great. It was pretty nice. Good. It was like mashed potatoes on regular dough.
I don't think they have any...
I, I got no stepway from no behind.
Okay, um, so I mean, I think that, uh, I mean, I, I would like to propose a, a path sort of forward if, if we can. Um, listen, I, I know there's, this is a lot to absorb and a lot to take in and, and, and things like that. Um, and Lenny asked a, a good question to me and I, I hope you don't mind me saying this, but, uh, you know, he said, hey, why wasn't, you know, a member of council or, or not, you know, or two council members, APC or BZA people on this? Well, let's be honest, there's not a person in this room, like I said, other than maybe these two, I don't know, that have the knowledge that could be a contributor to writing codes.
Did they get to sit in on it?
I'm sorry?
Did they get to sit in on the conversations?
Oh, yeah. They've been involved all done.
Okay.
Yeah, we said that at the beginning.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is that there's not a person up here, including myself, that knows anything about this stuff. We're not the experts. I think Dell or somebody made that comment. But I understand, you know, we all, there's some things in there that I, I, I will ask more questions about as well. It may not be the way we thought we were doing. Listen, a lot of this is stuff that we, we said we were doing and we aren't. Well, if, let's just, all I wanna do is change things to do it the way we say we're doing it. And make it, make sure it's legal. Make sure it's the right way. Follow state statute, things like that. You know, um, obviously there's, you know, gonna be a lot of discussion about this and, uh, which there should be. So I, I think what I'm gonna ask is, um, I mean, there's, I mean, does, is there more questions, general questions that people wanna ask tonight? Because I, I wanna get those out.
I wanna make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and specifically to what you're saying and to our situation here. So we're in a city that has codes that ninety-seven with whatever, okay? We now have professionals who have put together codes based on input from the city. And I remember all these little meetings down at different places, people submitted things and, and so here we are with it in front of us. But it's also my understanding that we need to take notes as we go with this codes and say, hey, this didn't work. And change, can change that code. Is that correct down the road and, and make, make the modification to it? So this isn't like granite. It's, it's a solid foundation that can be modified.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Yeah. And to that point, I mean, address...
And specific to the crematorium issue, Tony, I mean, I know that's a big issue that we had to deal with, but if we just said, okay, every time one thing comes up, if we change our whole code as a knee-jerk reaction to that, then we'll end up with a bad code again, right? We've gotta have something that's objectively good, and then when things come up, we will deal with it. And remember, the crematorium issue was handled by, not by the type of business, it was handled by the admissions being close to the school and the type of things that were coming out of the building. So that's, those are the kind of things that are general blanket protections that we've built into our code, rather than just giving a knee-jerk reaction and making new rules for one thing as it happens. So that, that's kind of the difference, and I see, I hear what you guys are saying, but we specifically said, you guys write it, the experts write it, and roll it out to Plan Commission and Council.
I'll give you an example. We just, we just had this in USB, I believe it was, when Scotty Ricketts had that deal about, he gave, he wrote it before the USB about the, why is it fair for the homeowner to have to pay for the lateral out to the main? I may not be saying that right. But obviously, and the answer from Billy Kennett was, that's the way we've always done it. It wasn't the right way. We didn't, we all didn't think it was the right way to put that onus on the homeowner. We're gonna do the same thing with what you got in front of you. It's gonna have similar things that come up, but I would like to address as many of them as we can before they come up. That's why I'm asking everybody to read through it and get the questions out, and then if it's something that, you know, say, Tony, or something, I don't know, whatever, whatever question you may have, or, or Lenny, or myself, and it's something that we want to discuss and we feel very strongly about, hey, if it's with, if it, if we can change it and stay within the statute, or stay within the, you know, realm of what we are doing, then we do it. It's not, you know, this is, this is the, the document that, like I think Dell just said, the professionals came up with. It's our job now to review the document and ask the questions. And then if, if you guys, you know, for things that we need to address, we'll address them.
And the reason this is a tough process, and, and, you know, Tony's in here fired up, cause Tony Abbott loves Lawrenceburg, he loves Lawrenceburg as much as anybody.
Nowhere near fired up.
But the reason this is tough is because no one's done it, no one's done it since nineteen ninety-four. Tom, how many times have we had something that no one's done since nineteen ninety-four? Now we gotta do it, and it's hard, and it is difficult, because you guys are doing things that no one else took on for political reasons, or cause it was uncomfortable or whatever, and you guys are doing a big thing all at once, where if we were updating this every four or five years, it would just be a couple weeks right now, right? And now we have to do nine, from nineteen ninety-four on kind of work, which we come into all the time, but you guys always step up and you say, we're gonna do it, we're not gonna pass the buck, and, and that's commendable, and it, but it is difficult. So take all the time you need and we'll, we'll get it right.
It's just hard to, to accept change, you know? I mean, when I sit here and I read this and I go to the old one, I'm like, I just stumble. And again, when I was in the Plan Commission meeting that night, I said, boy, it'd been nice if I seen what was changed, like what was cut out, what was new with red and what was marked out, and like you say, you guys said that would be impossible. But going back to what you said a few minutes ago, Mayor, we're going through this, but yet really, we're never gonna see anything here, it's gonna be more so them than us, because we're not gonna have that much, you know what I mean, that much say into it. And I get that because, as you stated, they are the professionals, you know? So, you know, the only thing that I would know is if, other than being on a planning zone, if something come up and I read through it, compared apples to apples, so to speak, I would never know unless businessmen come up to me or homeowners saying, hey, man, I went and seen your planning zoning and this is what they're telling me. Well, then what do I do then? Do I go to them as accountants and say, hey, do we need to, to look at that and maybe possibly change that? I mean, I don't know.
Well, I, I think it's, you make a good point. I, I look at it as, okay, we, we always have our agendas for the whatever meeting you're part.
Correct.
And if there's something on that agenda that addresses something, whether it's a code or an ordinance, that's when I usually would pull out my ordinance book and then I go through it and read it, because we all can't be, we all don't know all the ordinances, we don't all know the code, we don't know them until they come up, because then we went back and we've researched them, or we've read them, you know? Maybe something we've never read before in the nine years I've been here, but, but it's gonna happen. There, there's stuff out there right now that I know, as long as Tony's been around this, this stuff, there's stuff he hadn't read because he hadn't come across it.
Right.
You know, it just didn't happen or something. I just, I just think, you know, let's just, you know, let's, let's read through it, get our questions answered, and then address them as we go.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think it's, and especially with you five and the mayor, you two, it's, I think it's very important to understand what's in it. My, my phone never rings usually, don't start calling me now, but, but, you know, the first time you guys approve this and all of a sudden something happens out there and all of a sudden you got info calls from your neighbors saying, why did you guys approve that? So, and I, and I think it's good that they're cautious, because, you know, they're the ones that's gonna have to deal with these constituents out there, so I, you know, thank you on that, that's, that you guys are being careful with.
Well, most codes, most codes, those guys get the phone calls. I don't, I don't feel like phone calls regarding codes. Ordinances, yeah, we all probably get our share of calls, if it's something that's impeding on somebody else or whatever. But yeah, that's a good point, that's a great point, really. Go ahead, Lenny, I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna say, we live here too, all of us, so this doesn't just affect all the people, it affects us too. And there's a lot of stuff in here that I've still got questions about and I feel uneasy about, but I think it's, like you said, it's gonna take us a while to go through this. It ain't gonna happen overnight, so. And I know whoever wrote it up, you guys, I mean, they're not from Lawrenceburg. Our town is pretty unique and everybody down here knows everybody and we're all pretty much family, and I mean, I'm talking about everybody that lives here, you know?
Kumbaya.
You two.
Besides you.
Guys look like brothers. They look like brothers up here.
I'll just say for the record, he's made me upset and I'll eat one piece of pizza, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
So it'd be fair if we had another meeting just like this in the next two to four weeks, everyone writes their questions down, brings their questions to the meeting, that way everyone gets all their questions answered.
Well, I don't know how them guys feel, but I would, I mean, it would be like, like Mr. Rillette said, there's some things that's in the other one, that's, these are new, that we're bringing off, and some of the ordinance things, yes, I agree, they need to be changed a little bit, cause it takes, if you buy something or you do something to the city, it takes forever to get it done. But there's some things in here that I just.
Well, and I think everyone on this board agrees, I think we all agree that there needs to be some change to the local ordinance. I just think that there's small things in there that some of us have questions about, and I get that, it might be how, yeah, how it's in there, and I just think addressing it is the question moving forward.
I think, and I think it's, everybody should, it should all be addressed. Going back to your question, you know, to me, and, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong or different, but having the old set of codes and the new set of codes, quite honestly, I wouldn't know what I was looking at back here, because like I said numerous times, I never looked at them unless it was the subject that got brought up. So how do I, you?
Would depend on him for that.
That's, that's what I'm saying, but you just said that, that's why you don't agree with.
No, some of it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, there's some of it, but.
The legality part of it.
Like Dylan just mentioned, let's, let's get our questions, all of us, get our questions together, let's get them answered, and if it's something that we need to tweak or change or whatever, if we all feel that, you know, strongly about it, then we do it. I think that's a, and we, we have that ability to do that, and, and it's up to you guys to, to change those things. But I'm talking to the APC and BZA as well, if there's things that you see that you want to, we want the questions, because these guys will be the ones voting on the changes. I think I'm saying that right.
You are, so the way it works procedurally is that HWC developed the UDO for us, we presented it to the Plan Commission, they voted to approve it.
Right.
And certify it and send it to Council, if Council has any changes that they think should be made, then they would list those changes as suggestions, send it back to the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission can either make those changes or not, and then they'll send it back to you guys.
Well, I think we're at the point though where we can maybe skip a step and not, and it's being presented to us in a work session, we're not voting on anything today.
Yes, sir.
We are going to come back with our questions in three, four weeks, okay? These folks on these other committees will be here as well, and I want their questions too, if they have any, and at that meeting, we get some consensus, and if a change has to be made, we make the change, it goes into the new draft, and then when those changes are made, the new draft goes back before the APC. Is that sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Then it'll end up back with Council.
You're, we're in a work session now, you're talking another work session in three weeks.
For questions.
A collective group, group work session again, okay?
Yes.
And then, and then we reset to him and then APC.
Yep.
What, what'll happen is that you'll, essentially you'll identify those changes, we'll identify those changes, work out, hey, here's how we want that wording to be on these changes, and then that will go back to the, essentially the Council sends the ordinance back to the Plan Commission, and, and essentially they.
And then the Planning Commission, since they're a part of that, we want them a part of that, will, will approve it, the new version, so to speak, and pass it back on to Council for final.
Final approval.
That's, is that, is that agreeable to everybody? Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
You guys okay with that?
If anybody has any questions on old code versus new code, I'd be happy to sit with you and go over it.
That's good.
In that interim period, I mean, contact us.
Yes, stop in.
The biggest thing is getting clarity.
Right.
What you're reading, so.
That's a good question.
Cause where we've got four paragraphs in the new code, it might have been one line in the old code.
Right, right. Compared to what I'm reading in here, how much time you two got?
We can set up a weekly meeting, Lenny.
Welcome to your house. Make dinner.
I'll make dinner.
You can certainly direct questions to Brian and myself in the interim as well, or just say, you know, this topic, I want to make sure we talk about this at the work, next work session, and we can have it prepped, and again, you know, the, the discussion or thought process that went into that. I'll say, you know, like Dell said in his introduction, the intent here was to take the conference of plan that is resolution, not law, and turn that into unified development ordinance, ordinance that is law, the, the primary implementation mechanism for all the goals and visions in the conference of plan. At the same time, make sure it's legal, changes to state statute, changes at the federal level that trickle down to local planning and zoning, and then also reflect contemporary development practices. Outside of that, we don't have an agenda, okay? You know, we're not representing the builder, you know, we're not trying to get something, sneak something through here, we're trying to present what we think is the best way to implement the conference of plan and do so in a legal and efficient process. If that's not a good Lawrenceburg solution, tell us and we want to work through it and find a good Lawrenceburg solution with you.
Good, I couldn't have put it better.
Yep. Absolutely.
Everybody okay with the plan forward? We'll, we'll get a meeting put out to you, and we'll go forward. Thanks for your questions, Mark.
I was, I was just glad I don't have to deal with those businesses like Johnson.
All right, if no other comments, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming, be careful.
Thank you.
Next meeting.